Thank you for joining us for the last League of Women Voter and Collaborative Group Candidate Forum for the Common Council in District. This is co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Norwalk, the Norwalk Hour, the Norwalk Grams, the NAACP, the Coalition of Norwalk Neighborhood Association, and the Parent Teacher Organizational Council, the PTOC. We have a couple reminders before we get started. This year marks the eighth annual Election Day food drive. Please give generously when you go to vote November 3rd. And also to remind you that the Town Clerk's Office is open 9 to noon this Saturday, October 31st, for absentee voting. Now I'd like to introduce Lisa Thompson, who will introduce the candidates. Where is Lisa?
Oh, yeah.
Like I lost her. Okay, let's why introduce the candidates and tell us a little bit more about the order of the --
The order of the -- and how we arrived at our placement.
Prior to taking their seats, the candidates drew numbers to determine their seating order in terms of who was sitting one, two, three, four. So sometimes they may be sitting with their fellow party candidates, sometimes they may not be. Additionally, a designated member from each district drew to see which table of candidates would answer the first set of League of Women Voter questions. District D, Table 3, was the one to draw or lost the draw, depending upon your perspective. So they will be answering the first question from the League of Women Voters. After that, it will move to District E, then to District A, and on to District C for each question. Finally, each candidate will get four additional 30-second opportunities beyond their tables. There will probably be rounds for two -- time for two rounds of questions beyond their tables question to rebut or provide a comment, an additional comment, on any question during the course of the evening, but they only get four. Tonight, our moderator is Enid Orsman from the Dairy and League of Women Voters, where she has been a past president and has held a variety of other offices. And with that, I will introduce the candidates. From District A, we have Mr. James Kahn will be the first at Superminous Table, then Ms. Eloise Valentes, and then Darlene Perrepinon. That's the French pronunciation, I'm sorry. My French is bad. Or Perrepinon, if you're going to be speaking American. District C, we have Michelle Maggio, followed by Mr. John Kites and Mr. John Metropolis. And, excuse me, no, Mr. I don't have glasses on.
That's Mr. Metropolis, yes.
Mr. Metropolis, I do have Mr. Metropolis. All right. And we are still waiting on Mr. Benham. At Table D, we have Mr. Michael DePalma, Mr. Joseph Beggin, Ms. O'Toole Jean Durco, and Mr. Robert Carr. And finally, at District E, the last table, Table 4, we have Dave McCarthy, Tom Livingston, Johnny Gary, and John Bazzano. Good luck, candidates. And we ask the audience, I think, or you're going to tell them to turn off your cellphones. All right, I hand it over to Madam Moderator.
Thank you. And thank you to the League and to the candidates and to the public for taking part in this very important informational session. I'm in charge of asking you all the important questions. So we will start with Section D and the question, which you will all answer at one time or another, is, "Do you believe," I better get to the mic, "do you believe that the city of Norwalk zoning regulations are urgently in need of modification? And if so, and if collected, to the Common Council, what do you plan to do about it?" So the question is about zoning regulations.
First, a thank you to the League of Women Voters, everybody, for coming out. I do think that the zoning regulations do need to be revised. I think, you know, there's, and, you know, we see developments going on all throughout the city, as well as in my district, and, you know, I think it's something that, you know, needs to be looked at. I think it should be something that is kind of a living document. We know Norwalk is, you know, looking different than it has in the last, you know, few decades. So I definitely think it's something that needs to be addressed and should be revised.
Good.
Yes, I've been fortunate to be on the Zoning Board of Appeals for four years now, and we've had a lot of cases that come in. Most of them are similar. Most of them are simple matters where people just want to do a small addition into an area that's beyond their setback. There's a lot of existing nonconformity, especially in the roating area where people will come from another city and buy a piece of property, want to erect a home on that property. The neighbors will object. They worry about their view. They worry about parking. They have legitimate concerns. I think some of the major, some of the major things that we've had to deal with, such as the mosque, churches, I think the mosque is basically the allowance of a church to be put wherever there's an open piece of property. That may be one of the ones that needs to be updated, since currently, we've got so many people living in Norwalk and space is so limited, and churches need a lot of parking in most cases. So I think that some of the major zoning needs to be redone. But do we need to start all over, throw out what we have, and start new? I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I tend to agree with Mr. Beggin. I don't think we need to start from scratch. I've been the chairman of the Ordinance Committee this term, and the ordinances in zoning do fall together often. And yes, everything can be updated, reviewed, modified. There's always room for change. But the biggest thing we need to do is to protect our neighborhoods and make sure that we balance all the needs of the cities, of the city and all our different residents. And each area is going to have its own needs. So it's hard to say that we need to start from scratch, but I think we could definitely take a look at everything and make some changes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, I was a zoning commissioner for about six years, and it was a real honor to serve. My time was very collaborative. One of the issues that came up before I left was the mosque, and that raised a larger question that we never actually resolved, and that is, what should the placement of houses of worship be from now forward in a residential areas? And some of the thinking was that houses of worship are no longer Sunday-only. They're now more, you know, seven-day-a-week community centers with all kinds of programs for kids and parishioners, and that perhaps we should reconsider the automatic sort of right of placement in a residential, and that perhaps we should have a rule modification that would require either, you know, bigger setbacks, wider roads, or just say, well, not in a residential going forward. The other issue that always troubled me when I was on zoning was that there was no sort of coherent plan that we could reference, any kind of plan of development that would guide us as to whether a certain development was too big, or too intrusive, or, you know, used up too many resources for water or septic. And so going forward, I would like to see, not necessarily within zoning, but within the city, a planning function that would work with zoning and guide zoning as to, you know, how to make some of these fundamental policy choices.
Thank you all for thoughtful answers. The next question goes to District E, and it involves the evaluation of key city personnel, such as department heads, as is currently done in a confidential manner and it's done in private sector in a confidential manner. Do you believe that the public should have any participation in this evaluation process of key public employees? And if so, how should we do it?
Well, thank you very much. It's a great question, and I'd like to thank you and the League of Women Voters for putting this together this evening and for everybody for coming out on such a wet night. I think that, you know, the way the system is set up, you know, certainly personnel matters are something that need to be kept somewhat confidential. You have the mayor as the head of the city, and I think it's right that he should provide feedback and coordinate with his department heads, and the department heads so on down the line. And of course, there are HR rules in the state and union regulations that cover all that, and I think that's very fair. However, it is always proper for the public to have some input, and I think that, you know, all mayors, as far as my experience, have been open to hearing from members of the public and getting that feedback. And I'm sure that that, you know, as with any of us, when we get opinions from other people, it tends to help us form opinions of the people who work for us and would obviously have an impact on the evaluation that we provide to that department head. And I think that that's the way it should work. Thank you.
First off, thank you to the League and to everybody for coming out tonight. I know it's a miserable night, other things going on. In terms of the question, I do believe that we should have some mechanism to reflect the residents or constituents' reviews of employee performances. And after all, they all work, all of us, all those who are elected, work for the city and the employees, and I think we need to make sure that we never lose sight of that. That said, as a lawyer, I recognize that there are many restrictions on employee confidentiality, which we would obviously have to honor. But I don't think that precludes us from seeking input as to how our various department heads and other personnel are doing in performing their services for the city.
Thank you. I also thank the League of Women Voters and all the co-sponsors for this evening. I agree that the, there should be input from a lot of different sources. It's the mayor's responsibility, for most of them, department heads report to the mayor. It's the mayor's responsibility to do a job evaluation. And he needs the input from not only the public, but from other department heads, from the committees, the committee chair in particular, that working with that department head. And it should all be taken into consideration, and it has to be kept confidential. My experience is you can't say anything outside of the office in your evaluation with the person. So I support it fully, and I think we're moving in that direction.
Thank you as well. So look, in a perfect world, wouldn't it be great if all things were public, public knowledge of reviews or public knowledge of who's applying for a job? Reality is that you want the best person for the job, right? So how do you get the best person for the job? You go out and you do a good full search. That search must be done privately, or else who would apply for the job? If I go for a competing job at a competing bank and it's made public that I'm applying, well, why would I apply and have my current employer know what I'm doing? So, you know, look, in a perfect world, again, public, more public input is great, but practically speaking, I believe that private analysis, and, look, you elect officials to do that job, to hire people, right? I have hired people, I have laid people off, I have seeked for jobs. So that, and I've written many, many employee review, all that has to be done privately. Thank you.
Thank you. It's come to my attention that I should allow some time for rebuttal on these questions with the rest of the candidates. So I skipped District D. You made nice presentations. Is there anybody that wants to take their 30 seconds to comment on what they were talking about, about zoning regulations? Does anybody want, because you only get two minutes, so be careful how you use your 30 seconds. But you're welcome to rebut any of these questions. So District D was talking about zoning regulations. If anybody wants to say anything further. And District E, if there's any rebuttal that you would like on the evaluation. Then we will proceed to District A, and you have an interesting one because it involves the golf club. The Oak Hills Park Authority has approved the financing of a study of a possible building of a golf driving range on Oak Hills Park. Do you have a position on this development and on the golf driving range itself? Are you a golfer?
Who's answering that first? Me? I'm number one. Thanks to everybody for coming out, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for doing this. Yes, I am a golfer. I don't know if that was officially part of the question, but yes, I am a golfer. I love Oak Hills. I think that Oak Hills is a better golf course than a lot of private golf courses that I've played on. As far as the driving range goes, I think that right now, we're in a waiting seat position, and I think that's appropriate. They're doing a study to determine the feasibility of the driving range, and I think that we wait until we see what the results of that study are. Now, there's a discussion as to whether or not we can trust the study, because there been the suggestion that the study is positioned in such a manner that they're going to come back and tell us that the driving range is profitable and good and necessary and right. I don't know necessarily that I believe that, and I'm willing to withhold judgment on whether or not we should build the driving range until we see the results of that feasibility study. It's going to tell us whether or not it's going to be profitable. It's going to tell us whether or not it can be made profitable, and that's what we've hired that firm to do, and I think that we should wait and see what it is at the outset. Thank you.
Well, I don't know if it's officially part of the question, but I am not a golfer, even though I tried once, but didn't go so well. I had the opportunity to look at part of the master plan on the Parks and Rec Committee, and I was pleased with a lot of the plan, a lot of parts of the plan that had to do with preserving the nature and the woods and everything. And I have the pleasure of also being able to drive by Oak Hills every single morning when I go to school and I go to use the back roads to NCC. I don't officially have a position because I agree with Mr. Kahn on waiting to find out about the study, and also I've heard things about neighbors feeling a certain way about traffic in that area. So I'm still waiting for the study to come out so I can make a strong, find a way to make a position, find a position on Oak Hills.
Thank you to League of Women Voters and everyone else who are here to assist us and listen to us. Although I am not a golfer, however, I do have a stand. I would like to see for the next 10, 20 years that if I so decide to take my family on a beautiful summer day, that I'll be able to take some golfing lesson, and that's where I stand.
Thank you. And as you noticed, there is no District B because they are not contested, so they're not represented tonight. I'm sorry, the rebuttal.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add on that in my education process about Oak Hills and the driving range, taking smart on it, what I've come to realize, and I think that it's something that I'll best keep in mind, is that it's not either-or. There's a terrific system of nature trails there, which we've talked about enhancing and making something greater than it is, and I think that that's a good idea as well. And, you know, I think the driving range may have a place, but I think it's important to remember that it's not either-or. I think the nature trails are a great idea. I think potentially the driving range is a great idea as well.
Any other rebuttals? Yes. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I am a golfer. I'm not that good these days, but I'm tired of having to go all the way to Stanford with my son when we want to hit balls. And I think that if Oak Hills is going to get more rounds and more kids out there, which is the goal, playing golf arranges an essential part of that progress for Norwalk. I don't think that you can have a successful golf course for people who, most are beginners, that are going to want to play golf, when all they get to do is walk out onto the course, hit balls into the woods, you know, be told by the ranger to hurry. And I think the range would improve everyone's life in Norwalk. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, so look, OHPA has done a great job, I believe, in terms of working in the environmentalists and their concerns with the nature trail. I am a golfer, well, I try and play golf. I love the game, but the game does not love me, for I'm terrible at it, as asked my wife. But golf is a great family sport, and what better to develop more family time than having a golf range at that golf course? A golf course without a range is kind of nonsensical. Certainly, the study is important, and we should heed it. We should certainly look at what it says. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other rebuttals? Yes.
Yeah, just briefly, I'm not a golfer, and I don't play one on TV. Just walking around the neighborhood, talking to neighbors who do golf, what I've picked up on is this, because I asked whether, you know, should, like, city money be used to subsidize, you know, a golf range and so on? And she said that the idea was that a successful range would help to subsidize the club, which has had financial struggles for years and years. A lot of the things have not worked out. It's unfortunate that the proposed range is too short to use woods, but the bottom line is that the most competent there is, the competent person there is the pro, Ed Ruiz, and just listen to him.
Okay. Remember your 30 seconds. Anybody else? Then we'll progress to District C, and you are going to tell us about the crime rate. Police overall crime closure rates in Norwalk approximate the mid-20%, though major crime closure rates are much higher in the 70%. One of the reasons given by police for the lack of closure is the reluctance of the community to help police in solving these crimes. What programs would you support to reduce the reluctance of the community to come forth and to help the police in solving these crimes and in removing criminals from our city?
Hi. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming out. I wish I could say that I'm happy to be here, but I'm actually a nervous wreck. I am happy that it's a question that I can actually touch base on. Over my last term, I was the chairperson for Health, Welfare, and Public Safety. And through that committee, which some of my colleagues here were on, we did get to hear a lot about what police had to deal with when dealing with the community, when people didn't want to turn in criminals because of the repercussions they may have encountered. We also heard from some of the citizens about maybe more of a community policing so that there were more friendly atmospheres for people to feel comfortable in talking to our law enforcement. One of the things we improved on the Health, Welfare, and Public Safety Committee are the body cameras, which I think is going to be very intricate. I know it's in the early stages right now, however, it is something that will protect our police officers when investigating a crime, and it will also protect the safety of the individuals out on the street. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank everyone for coming out on such a rainy night, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this together. Like my colleague Michelle Maggio mentioned, the body cameras are a game changer. You know, I think that's very proud to be on the Helping Welfare Committee and also, you know, working with Michelle on that. So that's one thing. And also one thing, I think, I think we're making dramatic improvements with crime and relationships with the community by having our former police chief as mayor now. I think he's made strides with, you know, hearing what the public has to say and moving police programs, walking beat, something like, we're taking this from all different angles. So I think we're on the right path.
When I was first elected, we implemented a program where the police officers actively went out into the community and explained the importance of serving. We also worked with civic and religious groups, as well as small business owners, to encourage them to keep an eye on what's going on in the community and to communicate with the police when they get a feeling that there are issues going on within the community that could lead to crime. When a crime is committed, we have the, we implemented a program by which they could readily access with confidentiality someone in the police department to report that crime. We don't know what the circumstances are, where, what they are, what the relationship is to the person that committed the crime. So confidentiality is key. But I would like to say that that non-closure rate is not excessively high. I think the police department in Norwalk has done a phenomenal job in the closure department and also in policing the streets and keeping our city safe.
Anyone have something to add? Yes.
I'd just like to comment about the body cameras. The residents of the city love the body cameras. They have even contributed individually, privately, to the police department to make sure we had the cameras for the police from the very beginning. So I think it's important that we keep that program going.
Any other comments? Yes, Shannon?
Before we voted on the body cameras this term on the council, I spoke to a couple police officers in town, and they were all so eager to get the body cameras. And I think that speaks to the caliber of the force that we have protecting our city. And on the council, I voted anytime that they needed something to have their support because they're out there putting their lives on the line for us every day, and they deserve our support. Thank you.
Good. We will take up a new question, and that will go to District E, and this is from the audience. New development may overstress city services, such as police, fire, and public works. How can we pay for all of these things?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think it goes back to D now. I thought we went to --
We started with D.
We started with D.
So you're going, so we rotate. We started with D.
No. Okay. So they started again.
Again, what, yeah.
Reverse order.
Why would you do that?
I thought you went backwards.
But they got the first question.
But now we're on the second one.
Yeah. Where would you like to start? They got the first question, the last one. They started already. Okay, we started this week. This is a new format that we have not used before in order to make as many people available to questioning in a reasonable fashion, and the logistics are something to be worked out. But I hope that we do it in a fair way. We did start with D at the beginning, so for the first set of questions, so now we'll move to E, and this involves the new development and the costs involved.
Yeah.
Yes. New development may overstress city services, such as police, fire, and public works. How are we going to pay for all of this good stuff?
I think it's a very good question, because I think there's a lot of development going on in the city right now, particularly with the apartments and coming into the mall. I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that every new development brings new burdens and demands on our infrastructure and our services. So I think it has to be an integral part of every decision and zoning decision, I'm sorry, zoning decision, that we look at these burdens that would be placed on our infrastructure. So for example, and I know this is the case with the Wastewater Authority, you look at the additional hookup fees for new developments. I think we need to do that type of user analysis whenever we approve a project in the city.
Good.
Yes, thank you.
And make sure to speak into the microphone closely so that it'll be recorded. Yeah.
Okay.
It's good.
I agree. We need to do some planning now that the city's growing again. It's important to consider the revenues that this development is, are generating. The mall, for as an example, could be generating many, many millions of dollars for the city. The housing that's going up, Waypoint, there's retail business there, there's housing again. They're paying taxes, so the revenues are going up. But we really have to be careful in balancing the increase in revenues with the increase in demand on our infrastructure. In particular, the schools. Our schools are at 100% now, and the apartments are putting some pressure on them. We need to really sit down and plan for new schools. Maybe we look at reopening a school or repurposing other buildings. We need to look at that very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, growth, growth in the economy, the local economy, basically the grand list, right? So how do we grow that? By proper development, thoughtful development. I do take exception with one thing that John just said, and that is, now the city's growing again. The city's been growing. I'm not one to say that just because this past two years, the city's been growing. No, the city's been growing for the past eight years, and many of the projects today have, where the seeds were planted years passed. So I just wanted to say that. So the grand list must grow. I'm in commercial real estate. I understand proper development and how it should unfold. I'm a big believer in growing at tax base, and that's how you pay for things.
Thank you. Enita, other rebuttals? Oh, you haven't had a chance yet. You get your full turn.
Thank you, yes, and I think I would agree with most of what was said. It is a balancing act, and we do need to manage the demand on resources in context with the increase in our grand list. And this year, for the first time, we experienced a modest rise in our grand list, which did offset the tax burden, and that was a good thing. But again, it was as a result of projects that had been in the pipeline for some period of time. And, you know, what we need to be careful of, though, is not running amok and shouting that the sky is falling either. And a few months ago, I had to go back and And a few months ago, I had to go back and do some deep research within the zoning department to demonstrate that the information had been flowing out of zoning and to the Board of Ed with respect to the amount of children that were going to be coming out of the different developments that were being put into place. Now, do we need to keep an eye on that, update it, and make sure that the formulas that we're using to predict the number of children? Absolutely, we do have to do that. The same thing when the mall was being discussed, it was, oh my God, the sky is falling on the wastewater treatment plant. But when, again, I went to the WPCA and asked the questions there, the estimate was around 100,000 gallons that would be put into the system that can handle 18 million. So we do have to continue to watch all the different aspects of our city, but, you know, as we do this, there's no reason to, you know, reach for the panic button either. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else want to comment on redevelopment? Yes.
I thought those are great responses. Just a little footnote, one of my constituents pointed out to me yesterday that the system is already extremely close to its capacity of 18 million, and averages like 17 million gallons during a trough. So there are steps I think we can take to relieve future stresses, which are definitely coming down the pike, so to say. More permeable paving to keep storm water from coming into the system unnecessarily separating the storm-inseptic sewers, which we've just started to do. That will help. In terms of development generally, the, you know, the main thing is to not try to, well, to try to encourage less residential and more commercial.
Yes, you can have another 30 seconds.
I've known Mr. Hart for a number of years. I'm sure his constituent was just misinformed. The, we just went through this at the last meeting, the three-year average is 13 million, so there's 5 million cushion. And the trend is actually down because WPCA and their people take great pains to reduce the amount of infiltration from the storm water. And as that storm water is pulled out, and it's just the sanitary sewer that flows into the system, that number is trending downward. Thank you.
You want to come back on that, Mr. Hart?
There seems to be a conflict in the information.
There you go. It'll be resolved. Yes, sir.
I think that development, commercial development, is very important. It brings in tax revenue, and it does not impact on the school budget, which is the driving force in any tax increase in the town. I think modern construction is a lot more fire retardant, a lot more fire safety, so it does not put as big of a strain on the fire department. I also think modern construction, especially with the mall, is going to have a lot of water conservation issues. We can also look at water usage fees, wastewater usage fees, as a way to minimize. And as far as construction...
30 seconds. 30 seconds isn't very much.
Especially to the lead.
I hear what Mr. Metzop was saying about new construction, being the fact that my husband is a fire captain. There are some, there are some new constructions that are being built in a way that you've got a few minutes to before the tresses will come down. So my concern when the new buildings are being built and more people are coming to our area, that we have the adequate backup and for the fire department and police department to be stretched. Sorry. Thanks.
Anything else on redevelopment? All right. Then we will move on to a new question, and it'll go to District A from the audience. And this is a very short question. Charter revision, yes or no?
Absolutely, yes.
And I guess I should add why.
Oh. Okay, that works. No, I was a little confused because the at-large debate, it was one of your quickies. So I thought it was just a yes or no answer. But charter revision, to me, is very important. I wish we could have been able to address it in this term, but unfortunately, we couldn't. Charter revision, there's a lot of things under that, but the one that we've been talking about the most is expanding the terms for council members and the mayor to from two years to four years. And I'm a firm believer in that because as someone who's been serving for the past two years, I feel like if I was in here for four years, I can have a lot more to say to you guys than I've done. And especially when you're first year in, you're getting, you're just getting comfortable. And then your second year, you're still, you know, you're starting to get things going, and then you have to run again. And for me, I actually had a primary, so not only did I have to run, I have to run twice. So I'm a firm believer in that, and I believe that it should be four years for both council members and the mayor because fortunately, we don't have that great voter turnout. In the last election, we only had 37% of our eligible voters come out and vote, and that was with an incumbent mayor and a strong city, someone who's been serving the city for decades. So I think that four years for everyone is good. Charter revision is important.
As I think it, I believe a charter revision would be good. So yes, I would say yes to that. But I would have to take a look at it and see how many things I need to be revised on there. As I know that the famous talk has been on a four-year term mayor and a four-year term council. Though I do agree for a four-year term mayor, I'm not sure that I would agree to a four-year council. And as for not, that's where I stand.
Thank you. One more, District A.
Yeah, I don't think that there's any question, no matter who you ask, that the charter needs to be revised. It's an antique document. It needs to be thought of as a living document to some extent, and there's a lot of things in there that we can streamline, there's a lot of things in there that we can make more effective. I think in a lot of ways, the plan of conservation and development at this stage is arguably a better document to give us some direction and aim than the charter. I know that everybody likes to hit on the term lengths, and absolutely, that's something that I think, too, I think it's a no-brainer that those need to be extended. But I think that there's a lot of other extra fat in there that we can cut out, streamline, and make better.
Now, are there any rebuttals?
No, not a rebuttal. I just want to say that I do agree with the need to revise the charter. I will point out that what some things that people may not know that are in it, it's a very old document that includes such things as the council regulating horseless carriages and carriages along in the streets of the city, regulating velocipedes. There's a lot of fat, as you say, in that charter, and I think it certainly needs to be revised. But whether or not we do it all at once or in two steps is something we have to look at.
Yes. Other comments?
Yeah, no, something another constituent brought to my attention is the fact that the First District Water Supply, you know, controls water for, you know, my district and all the others, and they charge us 50% more than they do residents of the First District. But we have no political input into the First District being out of district. I don't think it's fair that we should pay 50% more for exactly the same water that all flows through District D anyway.
All right. No comments on that? All right, we're all comfortable with that. Then we will move on to another question. And this will be going to see. If you become a common council member, what will be the biggest change you would like to see in Norwalk? Fairly broad question.
Big change. Good question. A good answer. Big change. Personally, it comes to mind as having a plan for Norwalk. Obviously, we all see Norwalk growing around us, so I'd like to see all the new development coincide with and work well with Norwalk's vision for the future, which kind of brings me back to charter revision, which having a plan and having a mayor for terms is a good idea. I would like to see, I would like to see schools. I think our schools are overcrowded. I'd like to see a plan for that. What are we going to do? Where are we going to find the money for it? I'm looking at my kids right now. I'm looking, I'm doing this for them. I'm looking, what are we going to, you know, how is Norwalk going to be for them? So I'm looking to change Norwalk, not just for me, but for them and their kids. Thank you.
The biggest challenge?
Yes.
Is, I think the biggest challenge I see for Norwalk is something that the current mayor...
Change.
The biggest change, okay, the biggest change I see for Norwalk or challenge is what I see Mayor Reiling has begun with the capital improvement program, long-term capital planning. If there is one thing that can have a devastating impact on your taxes, it's putting off capital improvements to your schools, to your roads, to your sewers. Money is cheap right now. Borrowing is at an all-time low as far as interest rates. This is the time to put the town on a long-term capital improvement program, to address the roads, to address the schools, to address the infrastructure needs of this city, so that down the road, you do not have a devastating tax increase. When I was first selectman, we had been paying by roofs as pay-as-you-go. We didn't get to the McKinley School roof soon enough. It leaked, created a huge mold problem, a $600,000 expenditure turned out to be a $22 million rebuild. That's the kind of devastation that putting off your infrastructure needs of your city. So I applaud the mayor for giving it, and that's the biggest change I would like to see, the continuation of that program.
So over the last four years, a lot has happened in Norwalk, and a lot of it came from us working together bipartisan on the council. And so I really only have one huge request of a change for the citizens of Norwalk, and that would be for us to get Senator Duff to give us a big, huge fight for our fair share of the ECS funding. I think that when we work together and we get what we're supposed to have per student, we can have new schools, we can have great education, and we won't have to deal with the overcrowding as our city grows. So that would be the biggest change that I would push for if re-elected. Thank you.
Now, are there other comments? Yes.
Yeah, I have to take issue with something that Mr. Metzopolis said. I think, you know, if he feels that there's a long-term plan, it's something I haven't seen yet. And I don't feel that adding 500,000 to road paving and 500,000 to sidewalks is actually a plan. It's a good start, but I don't see anything actually changing there. And at the same time, you know, if we talk about what's actually gone into infrastructure, you know, we don't mention the $50 million over the last 10 years that was brought in through the Public Works Department, which has now gone away.
Thank you. Yes.
I would hope that if I were elected, that Norwalk could build a new school somewhere in Norwalk, hopefully South Norwalk, give the residents there a true sense of community, which is, I think, missing. And without that sense of community and unity, crime will always be a problem. Kelly and I went to Rudner Court. We spoke with the people that live there. We're busing these kids into all the different parts of Norwalk. They're not together. It's sad. It would improve the lives of, it would improve their lives and the lives of the entire community.
Just to comment on Mr. McCarthy's statement, I believe the question, what was the biggest change I'd like to see, and that was the biggest change I'd like to see. I think the mayor has begun the process, is what I stated. I did not say he had completed the process. He began the process, something that's been lacking in this community. And one final little thing, I find it kind of funny. We call for Hartford to make cuts, and then on the flip side, we tell them not to cut this program. Well, we're not going to have it both ways. Either we're going to have to swallow the cuts, which impact local taxes, or support our governor and the legislature in their...
Anyone want to continue that discussion? Then we will move on. I'm sorry. Let's do A.
Norwalk is in desperate, desperate need of being able to measure things and benchmark things. Not only that, we need to have a sense of urgency around those things. So right now, we talk about a lot of these issues, and I feel kind of like we're, you know, a blind man stumbling around a dark room, looking for a hat in the corner. We need to come up with a quantifiable, articulable plan, and we need to find a way to measure it. Because when you measure what matters, what matters improves.
Yeah, something to Mr. Metzopolis's point here. Look, I mean, are you really trying to defend Governor Malloy's cutting or not giving us our ECS share? Are you really trying to defend Governor Malloy's cutting back on hospital funding? That's ridiculous. I'm sorry.
You're going to use up all your...
What I said was, you can't expect programs to be fully funded and then not expect some painful cuts. I did not say that the ECS funding was correct. I did not say the hospital funds were correct. Cuts were correct.
All right, we will leave that at that. And the next question from the audience goes to District D, and it's fairly lengthy, but it deals with Washington Village. And I'm going to read it. Washington Village is government-sponsored segregated housing for the Fair Housing Act of 1964. Based on a June Supreme Court reminder to follow the Act, the White House and HUD in July published new, more stringent regulations that indicate cities like Norwalk cannot continue to cluster federally funded low and subsidized housing, but must spread them throughout the area. If these regulations are to be applicable to Washington Village, how would you implement these new housing requirements?
I don't think that Washington knows anything about Norwalk. I don't think that they should have the ability to tell us how to build our community. I've written articles in the paper about my feelings on Section 8 housing. This housing and urban development team that is trying to implement these rules is the same group of people that, as of April of 2014, instituted a mandatory doubling of the rent rates for everyone who is in housing in Norwalk. So I don't think they're really concerned about the needs of the actual residents that need affordable housing. They've actually raised the Section 8 vouchers to a point where housing has become unaffordable for everyone, not just people that live in housing. When you're paying $1,600 a month for a two-bedroom apartment in Rudner Court, that's a lot of money when you have to be in by dark. These are the words of the people that live there that I spoke with. At that rate, I don't know how any community is ever going to be successful in offering true affordable housing. The system does not work. What the voucher program will do is you go in every six months, they look at your pay stubs, they look at your tax return. If you make more money than you did when you signed up, they take your extra money that you've got. You're not allowed to have a savings account with more than, I think, $3,000 or $5,000. There's almost no way out. The people I spoke to don't want assistance. They don't want to be in housing. They want to own their own home. They want a sense of community. They want to be in a safe place. And I just disagree with that. I don't think it's truly in the best interest of the people that need their help.
All right, Chad?
In regards to affordable housing, Norwalk does have 11% affordable housing here. So to say that it's all clustered together, that's something that just isn't happening here. So the question is difficult to address the specifics to. For me, I think the bigger issue here in Norwalk is that we received a $30 million grant to completely rebuild Washington Village, and that would be phenomenal for the residents to get them out of the flood zone, new homes, and allow people a real sense of pride to have in their homes and their properties. What we need to address is that there's a suit pending that could put that grant in jeopardy because people are against that being done. That's what matters here in Norwalk. Doesn't matter what Washington says HUD should tell us to do. That's what we need to focus on, is protecting our people and getting that built.
Yeah, the Section 8 housing is different from affordable housing. Affordable housing rules are applying, I believe, to, you know, housing that could be owned, and there are specialized income limits for that. You know, I can't help but be sympathetic with Mr. Beggin's statements about the unintended consequences of regulations as proposed, as described in the question. I find it hard to believe that that would actually be rammed down our throat, and so, you know, I'll reserve judgment. you know, I'll reserve judgment.
Yeah, I tend to agree with the other folks here in District D. I think, though, you know, as much as there are some portions of these that you can't agree with and you might think need changing, you know, if things are coming down from Washington, you know, our hands are kind of tied, we're not really, you don't have the ability, as a councilman, to really make that kind of substantial changes to it. I do agree that with what Shannon said about, you know, you do find places throughout Norwalk that'll have affordable housing, so the idea that it is all clustered in one area, I think, is a little bit misleading. I think we've got to continue to grow that idea. I think that part of what makes Norwalk great is its diversity, and the ability to have people stay in Norwalk is very important to me. So, you know, as where I agree with my colleagues here that, you know, some of these, the overlying issues at the national level are problematic, as a councilman, I don't know that there's much we would be able to do.
Okay, any other comments? Yes?
I agree with what's being said, and I think Shannon hit on the problem we have in the city right now. We have a lawsuit that's stopping the development of Washington Village. It's a shame. We have to set that aside, we have to move forward with the Washington Village. It will help everybody. All the residents there will have places to live in the new building, modern, and it'll be great for that whole area. So we need to set that lawsuit aside.
Thank you. On that subject, there's really a follow-up question that I have here, and it should go to District E, which is about the Washington Village project, has been held up by a lawsuit filed by a group loosely affiliated with Ryan Park. Some say the $30 million grant is in jeopardy of being lost by the delay. Do you have any thoughts as to how this logjam can be lifted? So you've already addressed the fact that it exists. Is there... What's the answer, gentlemen of District D?
Well, I've stated my position on it, I think we need to lift that or set it aside. How to do that? That's why we have lawyers. That's your question, your answer. You know, and I think we have to focus on that. I don't know whether $30 million is at jeopardy, but in all likelihood, with everyone having a tight budget, whether it's on the state level or federal level, yeah, that money can be in jeopardy, and we should move forward as quickly as possible to settle, either settle the suit or set it aside.
Is there any other comment in the district? Go ahead.
Oh, is this a question for all of us?
Yes.
That's what I was giving you. Oh, okay, thank you, gentlemen.
This is a separate question, because it came up as a by-question.
Got it, okay. So, yeah, I must say, I am not 100% up to speed on this one, so I will say that, but I can guarantee you that, once I'm like a councilman, I will be. I work hard on everything I do, and I will become dogged on any and every issue, and you will know my stance. So on this one in particular, look, it's a very complicated question, I am familiar with it tangentially, but not deeply. Complicated question, requires a complicated and thorough understanding of the issue.
Okay.
First, I'd like to say that I'm extremely supportive and have been extremely supportive of the rebuild of Washington Village since it was before the council in the last term. I think the innovative one-third, one-third, and one-third structure that will allow people to, you know, grow out of Section 8 housing up into market rate units is a great way to allow people to develop and to, you know, perhaps seek an ownership stake. With respect to the court case, I think it's been well demonstrated that the people who filed it do not really have standing, and I would expect for the court to rule exactly that. I mean, you don't show up in a city-owned park and suddenly have a position to prevent a development that is nearby and should hopefully not have any effect on that park. So I would hope that the courts will rid us of this problem, and then the project can move forward. But barring that, I would look for some leadership from the top to bring in the affected people, because unfortunately, we've, you know, have a number of areas in the city that have been plagued and ground to a halt because of just a few people. And I'm obviously speaking of Wall Street, as well as this Washington Village project, and I would expect something to be done. And I know there were a number of cases under the Blight law that I worked to create in my first term that have also been filed, and those should be pursued as well. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this?
No, I've got my chance.
You haven't had your turn yet.
No? No, actually, I want to say, first off, I do support the redevelopment also, and I agree with a lot of what was said here. I think that, like any matter in litigation, you know, the ideal solution is we can resolve it quickly. I've been involved in a lot of litigation, a lot of negotiation. I think it's very important that we try and get all the parties to the table in a non-confrontational manner, do the best we can to try and reach a solution that way, but if that doesn't work, we're going to need to fight, get our act together, quite frankly, and fight as hard as we can.
Good, thank you. Any other hands? Yes?
I would support Washington Village, I think the lawsuit's ridiculous. And we visited Meadow Gardens, Kelly and I, and it's beautiful. They were, I don't know when that was updated, but the complex up there is spotless. The people who lived there were great, and if that can be the outcome of a renovation to Washington Village, and the people there can have a better sense of community, like I said, it's a definite benefit for the city. It'll reduce crime and just make Norwalk an even better place to live.
Anybody else want to weigh in on that question? Then we will move on. And I think we go back to District A. This question is, the Sono Connection Mall project has been in the review process for several months. Public comment in news media has been of two minds. One position can be characterized as approve it, approve it already so it isn't lost, quote. The other position we can characterize as, quote, continue to do your due diligence and support the city negotiations so they get a good government and a good agreement in project, unquote. Where do you stand on the Sono Connection? District D.
Well, it's already been approved, as I understand, yesterday. And as I stated before, it was approved, I'm very optimistic about the Sono Connection. And the reason why, that I know that it will bring some jobs, and even though sometimes I said those will be some moderate jobs, and career jobs, which I believe that Norwalk is in need of. But I believe the question said, and I know that I read that the council will still hold a position on the design, and that's something I think that was very strategic and very intelligent to do, because we know that they've been going back and forth on that. And I believe the second part of the question is where I stand on it.
Yes.
Well, now, I would say that it's too late to go back. And also, I often say that we must not, we must always promote progress, but I know that with every growth and every progress, we need great leadership, and that's what we need, and that's something that I know that the city is in need of, leadership. And that with this progress, my concern would be that where do we stand in 10 to 15 years if this all go down? Have we already thought about who's going to pick up all the mess that possibly, if this doesn't all work out? That would be something that I start looking into.
Good.
Yeah, the mall at this point is all but done, so the question of where anybody stands on it, I think is a done deal. I would comment that I think the GGP are exactly the people to be in bed with on this deal. I was just on a conference call last week that Merrill Lynch hosted with GGP, and they were talking about specifically how you can't have a mall the way a mall used to be anymore. So they're really on the bleeding edge of this thing, and I think that we're in bed with the right people. I think the interesting thing about the mall is the effect of the enterprise zone. The enterprise zone is something that I'd like to see enacted down in the Wall Street area, which is in District A. I think there's a tremendous amount of opportunity that we can pursue down there, and I think that the enterprise zone, or expanding an enterprise zone into District A down in the Wall Street area, would help to do that. You've got commercial property down there that's selling for $150 a square foot, market rate for that should be about $220 a square foot, and that equates from the difference between a $10 a square foot rent to up to about a $17 a square foot rent. That's one of the levers that we could pull in terms of expanding the length of the grand list and helping to pay for some of all this stuff. Thank you.
My position on the mall, even though it is now a done deal, my position on the mall has always been in support of it because of GGP's plan to connect it to Central Norwalk, which is my district, and I feel like that's something that Wall Street desperately needs, and with the new waypoint development, it's just a perfect plan. But as for the council's role in design and still being a part of it, I think yesterday we made it pretty clear that we would like to continue to be a part of it, and I'm happy that everything worked out yesterday.
Anybody else wish to comment? Then we will move on. And I think the next question goes to District C. There we go. "The City of Norwalk Planning and Zoning Department has been criticized by some who claim that its staff lacks a city planner with appropriate qualifications, and that as a result, development in the city lacks coherence and is haphazard. Do you agree, and if so, how do you plan to correct the situation?"
I'm not one to directly criticize a department, I'm not working there day in and day out, but what I can say is that what you do need is a master plan that's in place, and you need consistent zoning. I think what's happened over the years is that zoning has been, is spot zoning, and a lot of the zoning regulations that are in place now are 50, 60, 70 years old, and times have changed. Where it was, like when I grew up down the street from my grandparents, it was a corner store, because that's how people shopped. So that little area was zoned commercial. Well, 50 years later, commercial has a very different connotation than it did 50 years ago. So I think that we need to tweak our zoning department, because I have heard that people are not happy the way zoning decisions are sometimes made, but I also think you need a master plan and you need zoning in place that reflects... The master plan is your aerial view, your zoning is the implementation, and I think the zoning has to be looked across the board and make it consistent throughout the city so that your zoning department knows the ground rules and understands that it's a level playing field. And nobody's ever happy with the zoning department.
Can you repeat the question so that I answer?
I knew you were going to ask that. "The City of Norwalk Planning and Zoning Department has been criticized by some who claim that its staff lacks a city planner with appropriate qualifications, and that as a result, development in the city lacks coherence and is haphazard. Do you agree, and if so, how do you plan to correct the situation?"
This is a tough question for me, because I'm kind of all over the board with this. As far as a city planner, I'm not really sure if that's the way to go, because would the city planner serve at the pleasure of the mayor, and then the city planner be overturned every two years? I'm not really sure what the procedure would be on that. Currently, I believe that Mayor Reiling is working well with all the department heads and having meetings so that there's more of a consistency through the actual progress of the zoning plan and permitting and procedures. Recently, we just went to ordinance to talk about outside seating, because I think that that's one of the things that's not consistent in the city, where South Norwalk may be zoned for outside dining and East Norwalk may not. So I think that if we could tweak some of those zoning issues and have more of a consistency throughout the city, that may be the way to go. That's it, thanks.
A city planner's been discussed since the beginning of this administration, and since Mayor Reiling's recent hiring of, well now it's been a year now, her Economic Development Director, I think they would coexist very well together. Like I mentioned before, we've got development, we've got new things, we've got things on the horizon, and I think a city planner would benefit Norwalk tremendously. And I think you get more people in the mix, you know, working together, and economic development attracting the developers, and then the city planner, you know, working with them directly. I think it would, it's the direction Norwalk's going, and I fully approve of it.
Good. Anybody else want to weigh in on that? Yes?
Yeah, I absolutely believe we need to hire a city planner with the right qualifications, full professional qualifications. I think that too often, as we all know, we go from crisis to crisis on our zoning issues, and I think that in conjunction with the development that's going on cries out for some sort of master plan and somebody to help us get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, I've probably heard now 15 people answer the question of, we need a city planner, but every person has answered it and they want them to do something different. I heard someone wants a school engineer, I heard what Mr. Livingston just said, and it seems to me that people want someone with a magic wand. I can agree that we do need to do more planning, small P, but no mayor, no zoning department head, no zoning commission has asked for this position, and I think, you know, if the answer might be that we need 14 different people, or we need some leadership.
Okay, I had very good relations with the zoning staff when I was there. I do agree that we need a city planner, I think we need professional planning. I do not think the zoning staff should be the planners. I think that they should enforce the rules that exist as dispassionately as possible, and if they are the planners, they are no longer dispassionate. We need an outside city plan and planner, and by the way, that was called for by the mayor when I talked with him, you know, a couple of days ago, so he certainly thinks it's a good idea, and I do too. Okay.
Yes.
What I do know regarding this is that I agree with Dave, with McCarthy, leadership is what we need. We currently have a city planner, even though she's not doing all the jobs, but she's a person who is being paid, and nobody's saying that. And I do agree with what Mayor, well, not yet Mayor, but will be Mayor soon, Straniti said, that we need to do a nationwide search in order to have that kind of leadership, even though we do prefer to hire and promote within, but sometimes we have to go across the nation.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, back again.
I agree with Dave. I've always, I've lived in Norwalk all my life, I've always considered our mayor to be our main city planner. I don't see why that's so hard, but if we need a different direction or a different plan, then that's on November 3rd.
There you go. Then we will move on, and I think District D, we're going to talk about policing again. "Community policing is thought by many to be an effective process to bring the police authorities into closer relationship with the public. Do you support community policing, and would you support its extension to other parts of the city? If yes, would you support the additional funding that might be required and the negotiated changes to the police union contract?" District D, Chad.
Yes, I support community policing. I think that that's a great way to get our police out into the community and be more familiar with the people, rather than coming off as just an authority figure there among the people. To say, would I approve funding and changing the contract? I don't think we're there. I think we could find different ways to work with what we have. I know over the summer, the chief organized a group of community leaders and an outside firm to come in to discuss how to best work within the community and for the officers to best respect and understand where all the members are coming from. And I think more programs like that would be a better use of smaller funds than to try to open up contracts and stuff. I think we can definitely work with Chief Colowick at the helm, they've done so much so far, so let's keep going forward before we would expend funds like that.
Thank you. Yes, you're next.
No, I wouldn't try to second-guess Chief Colowick, I think he's been doing a fabulous job. You know, the results are clear in the statistics. Community policing clearly is one of the best programs we have, been the bedrock of law enforcement and improving our crime rate, and I wouldn't expand it unless, or I wouldn't second-guess the chief. If the chief thinks it needs to be expanded, I'd back him up 100%.
Thanks, yeah, I pretty much echo Robert's feelings on this. I think community policing is something that's obviously been successful in this town, it's been successful throughout... It's been successful throughout the country and other cities in Connecticut. But I agree that, you know, in terms of, you know, what the chief has done, he's been, he's been great and I think that I would defer to him and if funding needed to be made available, in my opinion, the job of the council, you know, we're supposed to educate the kids and we're supposed to keep the streets safe and those are the two most important things. So if you can't keep, you know, funding available for the chief who's asking for it, if he is, then, you know, I would find a way to find the funding for that if he felt he needed it.
As far as I understand, we have community policing already and it's been effective. But like I mentioned before, that without a true sense of community among the people in those areas, you can have all the cameras and cops you want, but the people themselves are going to be the main component in keeping streets safe. Parents being involved if they can be with what their children are doing, making sure that they're in school, getting educated. We have a mechanism for them to gain upward mobility financially. Those are the things and it really goes back, in my opinion, into a lot of the housing and the Section A and just the general feeling that I got from the people in South Norwalk that they, they just, they feel they don't matter. They feel that no matter what happens in the area, everyone is, is sort of just fighting a losing battle down there. They can't get out of housing, a lot of them, and without that, there's just not a lot of hope among the people in those communities. And I don't think that the police are going to be able to change that without some serious help from building the community itself down there. Thank you.
Any other policing comments? Then back, oh, you, you're welcome.
Community policing is very important. Just the mere presence of a police officer in town driving through has made a tremendous difference in Rowden recently. We talked to Chief Kowalik and he's made a few changes and we have the policeman driving through and giving out speeding tickets and that makes a big difference. Obviously a lot different from the comments that were made earlier about some of the communities, but I think they're doing a good job. As a matter of fact, some residents have asked for Police Appreciation Day because the, just the appearance of a car, police cars, it changes. Thank you. I'm supposed to go like this?
Yeah.
And now I know what the red card means.
All right, let's have another question and it'll go to District E. Considerable progress has been made recently in providing for public comment at common council committee meetings and other city agencies. However, some boards and commissions such as the Board of Estimate and Taxation still do not provide for such opportunities for public participation on agenda items. How do you feel on this issue and what would you do specifically about it?
Sure, I've seen public, the public comment portion of all these meetings is terrific. It's great to have the public come to these meetings, express their opinions, but I also must say that there's a time and place for everything. And if the BET believes that that's not appropriate for them, well then I have to ask them and find out why. But I will say, I've also seen abuses at several meetings where citizens really were not contributing. So one must look at it pretty carefully.
Okay.
It's a good question for me. I actually, at the beginning of this council term rewrote the rules of the common council to more specifically address how the council deals with public comment because it had been raised as an issue previously and I think it is important to have people's input and it was specifically put in there that each committee should allow for that. But I will agree that many times it has been abused. I mean, we do set up some rules and a framework so that meetings don't go on forever and, you know, people should get an opportunity to speak, but they shouldn't commandeer meetings, they shouldn't go on, they shouldn't be abusive to the people either on the board or other people that are trying to speak. There's a certain amount of reasonableness that needs to come into play. And I think ninety-nine percent of the time, that's certainly the case and in the rare circumstances where it's not, you know, then the chairman or mayor, depending on what meeting it is, has to, you know, take steps to ensure that there's, you know, again, proper communication, but with proper decorum to allow the committee or the council, as the case may be, to, you know, get through the work in a respectful and appropriate manner. Thank you.
You know, I think it's actually a pretty easy question because we all, well, hopefully most of us will work for the city, I mean, at some point. And I think these are our employees, they deserve a right to speak and I think they're ways of incorporating public comment in any meeting. I think you can put in some rules about decorum, about insulting others, but I don't think it's too much of a burden for any committee to leave some sort of time allotment for people to speak, whether it's two minutes, three minutes, whatever it is. I don't see how we should be sitting here saying, well, that's not appropriate, that's not appropriate. I think people need an opportunity to speak and be heard. Thank you.
Well, after two terms as a councilman and has sat on a number of committees and in common council, I think time is provided for people to speak. We give two minutes in some committees and three minutes in others, but it is a great forum for us to hear, us on the committees, to hear what the public's thinking and what their opinions are. And I think it works well at the common council level as well.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment about the public participation? Then before we close, we really should talk about the Board of Education, we haven't dealt with them before. Board of Education expenditures represent well over half of the city operating budget and this is going to District A, I'm sorry. There is general agreement that much remains to be done to improve Norwalk's educational performance. How, if elected, are you going to reconcile the need for improvement in our schools with the pressure to minimize the burden on the taxpayers who are complaining that our taxes are already too high?
Well, speaking first of all with an awareness for the fact that all the common council does is approve the budget for the Board of Education and doesn't have so much to do with the nuts and bolts of making the education system better. Of course, obviously, we need to make sure that our education system is solid, we need to make sure that we're doing the things to pay for education. Education is a, is an investment in our city. The National Bureau of Education, of Economic Research, rather, has done a study that suggested that every dollar that you spend, or every dollar, rather, in terms of grant and state aid money that comes into an education system is good for a twenty dollar increase in property values. So I know that everybody always goes back and talks about the ECS and certainly the ECS is something which is hammering Norwalk, but we got to find a different way because I think it's pretty clear at this point that the ECS is the way it is and we are where we're at. And again, I'll go back to saying that I think that the strategy needs to be finding substantially compelling ways to raise more money via expanding the grant list and things of that nature.
I actually have to agree with Mr. Khan almost every single thing that he said except for the ECS formula. I think it's still something that we should truly fight for. I think we really, I know everyone has spoken about it for years and, you know, so many people have written articles and there have been so many, so many discussions on it, but we really truly need to continue to fight because we need, we need to make sure that our kids are treated the absolute best and we know that there are other towns that get so much more money than we do. And we aren't this, you know, we are in Fairfield County, but we aren't this extremely rich city. We have our set of problems and we can't continue to put this on our, on our taxpayers and our homeowners. We really, really have to keep fighting the ECS formula.
I have to agree with everything that's been said. There's no sweeter way to put it. We must keep going to Hartford to advocate for the ECS formula. We need to educate our children and that is the, that is the antidote to a better city, to a fruitful city. We are only getting older, the older is getting older and we have to rely on our youth. Every ten years, a generation change and if we don't invest in our children now, what's going to happen to us twenty, twenty-five years from now? And I agree a hundred percent that the council doesn't get much to say regarding BOE, however, that we must work and support our superintendents. There's no other way around it.
Yes. Mr. Bazano.
Thank you. Look, ECS funding is critical and I am very disappointed in our Mayor Rilling. When he ran against Dick Moshe, he swore up and down that he will not stop fighting for more ECS funding until he wins. Well, he has given up. He's publicly stated he will give up. He has waved the white flag. When Kelly Srinity becomes mayor of this great city, she does not know the word quit. She will not stop until she gets the ECS properly funded with Norwalk. Thank you very much.
Yes.
I just got to rebut on that. I've, I keep hearing ECS funding, ECS funding and I'm not a, I guess, a politician to be saying, because I just laid out a line. You know, I've heard from both Republican and Democratic representatives in Hartford. ECS funding is most likely not going to change anytime soon. And, and, and I think finding, so I'm not going to sit around and wait for ECS funding. Alternatives for the funding for Norwalk need to be the priority. We're either raising our grant list, finding, you know, cuts without affecting services, you know, but I just, the fact that we're saying that Mayor Rilling didn't go up there, I can say this, that he has gone up, I'm sorry, Tom.
We'll leave it at that. I think we got the point. Yes.
And I think one of the things the mayor has realized is that ECS funding is going to be very difficult to change because Norwalk has some very wealthy areas and some very severely economically challenged areas and that makes ECS funding out of skew to what Norwalk's really true needs are when it comes to ECS funding. Well, what the mayor has done is outreach and spurred economic development, alternative sources, the mall is a good example, that's going to bring tax dollars in that we could utilize to, into our education system. When you do not have, when you do not have housing built and you have commercial properties built, that is...
Anybody else want to pick up the thread? Yes.
I wouldn't have brought this up, but I will finish it. Nobody said that it was going to be easy, but when you're running for an office and you say, you're going to do it, you're going to do it, you're going to do it, and then you say, ah, I can't do it, I'm just going to give up, that's, that's really the issue is more the flip-flop than the impossibility of the task.
There you go. Other thirty seconds, anyone? There you go. Then I think that we have basically finished our questioning. I thank you for making available our wide range of issues and answers, but don't move because you all have closing statements to make. You have one minute to make a closing statement and we will start with District C. Thank you.
Did you say this, man?
Me?
Closing statement.
Who?
You, you're next.
Go ahead.
Since we're getting elected, I made it a, I made it a top priority and my wife can attest to this, to, to jump right into this, absorb as much knowledge as I can, get over that learning curve and I think I'm at the point where I understand the process very well and I'm not going to not give credit to folks that have been on the council, Mr. Hempstead, so forth. I've learned from many, you know, on both sides of the aisle and just want to say if reelected, that the city will be getting a councilman with experience for still the low price of forty-six dollars a month. Thank you.
In my course of public service, I've been first electman of Fairfield. I was ten years in the State House of Representatives. I have a good grasp of government. Over those ten years, or fifteen years actually, I've been endorsed by policemen, by firemen, by taxpayers association because of my work to keep taxes low. I voted for the largest tax decrease in Connecticut history. I brought, I built schools and brought the projects on time and under budget. These endorsements don't mean anything because the biggest endorsement I'm looking for is the faith and trust with your vote on Election Day, November 3rd. Thank you.
Hi, I don't, I don't have that extensive background, however, I do have roots here. There are some people in this room that I've known for over thirty years. I am a mother of four, I own a small business, my husband works for the fire department. A lot of my good friends own small businesses in Norwalk. My heart is here. I think that I will fight for our kids, I'll fight for small business. I may not always have the right answer, but I will do my research until I find it. Well, it may not be right, but it'll be an answer. I worked well with all of my colleagues, I've had a great time working with my Democrat counterpart here, Mr. Caides. We've become fast friends and his family is important to me. I think that I will do my very best to continue to work hard. I said in the East Norwalk meeting that with the exception of my children, getting something sun here has been extremely rewarding. Thank you.
All right. Dee, go. Go ahead, Dee. We can just go around the table.
All right, thanks. So, you know, a question that comes up when you're on the campaign trail is always, you know, why are you running? I mean, the answer for me, it's kind of something I've always wanted to do since I was a kid. I grew up in a house where my father was a two-term councilman and was always very interested in politics, went and earned a degree in political science. But then really the question is why now? And so, you know, I'm thirty-five now and as a, like I said, a lifelong Norwalk resident, met my wife in the halls of Norwalk High. It starts to get frustrating to me to see people my age as they're starting their families moving to other towns and for various reasons. And so I was always giving this basic stump speech about how great Norwalk is and eventually they said, you got to just run for office and tout it to the constituents. So that's, you know, why I'm jumping into this and I'm very excited. I'd also like to just say that, you know, I'm very honored to be with the other candidates in District D. I think it's been a very civil campaign and everybody's been, you know, running their campaigns very well and I think that District D will be in good hands. Thanks.
My name is Joseph Bagan. My wife Karen and I have four great kids and hope for each of them to one day own homes in Norwalk and raise their children here, close to us. I'm running for the Norwalk Common Council because I am concerned about the future of our city. Every honest Norwalk resident realizes that the economic and business climate in Connecticut is not good and that Norwalk does not receive any real financial help from Hartford. I will work to make sure every decision that is made has the best interest of the average taxpayer in mind and that tax increases must be avoided for our local economy to grow. I understand that our home values depend on many things and that a great school system is one of the most important. We must continue the groundbreaking financial reforms of our current Board of Education and support them at all times. The more financially efficient the school system operates, the less likely we will endure property tax increases. If I am fortunate enough to be elected, I will make the Norwalk taxpayer my special interest above any and all others that come to Norwalk. I have lived here all my life and honestly care about the future of our great city and the people that live here. We can make these changes and set a different course for Norwalk. Thank you for your vote on November 3rd and God bless America.
I just wanted to thank the League and the other sponsors for organizing this event. Oh, no, I'm done already?
Redo.
Do I get a redo? I can take a mulligan referencing the golf course? We're good? Okay. All right. All right. So thank you to the League and the other sponsors for organizing this event this evening and thank you to everyone who came out in this weather because it is not a nice night out there. As I look back on my first term on the council, I am most proud of my work as the chairman of the ordinance committee. We worked hard to pass twelve ordinances which include streets and sidewalks, demolition delay for historic buildings, road naming and senior tax relief. Also, at the beginning of the term, establishing a commercial blight ordinance was a priority for many of us on the council. I am happy to say that we passed the commercial blight ordinance and it goes into effect on January 1st. If reelected, I will continue to represent, represent the citizens of Norwalk knowledgeably and well. Also, I will work to ensure that the schools have the tools they need so they can focus on the children and learning. In closing, I ask the voters to give me another two years to continue the work that I have started. I will continue to work in the best interests of the residents. Thank you. (applause) In closing, I ask the voters to give me another two years to continue the work that I have started. I will continue to work in the best interests of the residents. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank the League and everybody who came tonight on this rainy night. I think it's exemplary of how good the citizens of Norwalk actually are. I think sometimes we succeed in having a fairly good government, just because the people are as good as they are and have a lot of integrity. The three things that I've, you know, picked up on that I am certainly most interested in is, first, fix the roads; second, have a comprehensive plan of development; and third, ditch the charter and start again. Thank you very much.
Mr. McCarthy.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. I'm Dave McCarthy. I've been on the council for two terms. I'm chairman of the Public Works Committee, and I implemented the single-stream recycling program in my first term against heavy opposition. I worked across the aisle in doing that. I've also worked across the aisle in developing the original residential blight ordinance, the first non-controversial budget after the budget crisis last term, in implementing the settle-and-buy mosque settlement, as well as protecting the open space around NCC and Boulder Court. What I do on this council is work. I get things done, I use data, I use input, and I put it together to get things done to make this city better. If you'll vote for John Bazano and I, we'll both do that for you and make sure that this city gets just a little bit better every day. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank the League again for putting on this debate and all my colleagues up here for their participation. I'm honored to be with such a great group here. I'm a lawyer and 28-year resident who loves our city and believes in its future. My wife and I have raised three kids here, and I've worked at the former PerkinElmer Corporation in Norwalk for 16 of those years. And I've seen a lot of good things happening in the city over the last few years, and I credit Mayor Rilling for his leadership on those issues. But I've also seen us get bogged down from time to time with egos, politics, and ad hoc solutions to our problems. I think we need to get beyond those, because like it or not, our city is going to continue to grow, and we have to be ready for it. We need to come together with a master plan that recognizes all of Norwalk's great assets, its location, its history, its neighborhoods, and its diversity. Only in that way are we going to continue to attract the families and businesses necessary to grow our grant list out of time. Anyway, I guess I'm out, but I hope you'll support John ignoring me on November 3rd. Thank you.
My closing is going to be easy. No, I'm excited to be running for a third term. Excited because this is the first time in years Norwalk is moving forward. Yes, seeds may have been planted years ago, but we have a mayor in place now that is watering them and fertilizing the soil so that we're seeing development. We're seeing development that we haven't seen before. But to keep this momentum, you need a council that is civil and bipartisan. I am that type of councilman, and I hope you vote, I don't hope, I know you'll vote, for me, Tom Livingston, and our team on Row A. Thank you.
So, over the past few years, we've seen a lot of challenges in our great city. The mosque, the Board of Ed, ill-advised housing behind NCC. And I've sat back and I've watched this happen, and I've only heard one voice in my district, and that voice was of David McCarthy. I want to join David. I hope you put me with David on the council. I will be a strong advocate. I will have an opinion. I will do the research. I will work hard for you. Vote for me, John Bazano, and Dave McCarthy on November 3rd. Thank you.
Let's hear from District B.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Thanks to Darlene for running. Thanks, Louisa. Thanks to Steve, who couldn't be here, and thanks to all my colleagues for coming and the League of Women Voters as well. When my wife and I bought our house about 15 years ago, we chose our neighborhood very carefully, and we did it because we saw so much potential in the neighborhood that we chose. And I still see that potential. But I think even better than that, I see a path to that potential. Norwalk can be the city that other cities look to when they want to answer the question, who are the people who are doing it right? In order to have that happen, 30 seconds, man, we need leadership, we need a vision, we need a willingness to be held accountable, and we need the ability to execute effectively. I'm equipped, and I'm ready. I commit to District A that your problems will be my problems. I commit that I will go to bat for you and your family. I'm ready to do the work. I'm James Con. I'm running in common council for District A, and I would be honored if I could earn one of your votes.
I would also like to thank the League and everyone for being here on this rainy night. First of all, I have to say, I cannot believe it's been two years, okay? I feel like I was just doing this last week. But I will say, not much has changed in those two years about how I feel. Oh, except I can have a glass of wine after me. But, what a station that is. But my feelings about Norwalk hasn't changed, and I'm so happy to be part of this group of council members. And I'm someone who truly, truly believes in Norwalk and starting a future here. As someone who was born and raised here, I want to work, live, and raise my family here. It's the number-one thing on my list. And I hope that I can continue working hard for you all in District A and in Norwalk, and I hope I can get your vote with the rest of Row A on November 3rd. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight to have a listen. One of my many blessings is that I was born in Haiti, studied abroad, and worked abroad in the Middle East in conflict resolution. My diverse background has enabled me to relate to people from all walks of life. I grew up in Richwood, where I earned my bachelor's and later my master's in 2013. When living in Stanford, I founded a youth organization, Leaders of Tomorrow. And in Norwalk, I operated with my family a dry cleaning franchise. I care deeply about Norwalk. I see changing, and I want to be part of that change. We have apartment development planned, a mall planned, a school that are rapidly overcrowded, traffic, and we have seniors that are moving out of town because they can't afford to live here. Good changes, sad changes, that all try to work together to find solutions that, what I can see, Norwalk's growing pain. On November 3rd, the taxpayers have a choice. You can choose to vote Republican or Democrat. However, I'm one who will work for you tirelessly to represent you. Thank you all.
And I thank the candidates for exploring so many interesting issues. I think you did a wonderful job to think this is a vehicle for exploring all of those things. And I appreciate the attention and time that the audience gave to all these issues. I hope you learned something, and you go home and vote at the next election. Good night.
Thanks, Susan. Good night. Good night.